Hello everyone, I'm Mark Kobrick and this is the Lakewood City Council Candidates Forum. The goal of the forum is to present the views of the candidates for Lakewood City Council in a fair, nonpartisan setting so that you, the voters, can make an informed decision. All candidates, whose names will appear on the ballot, have been invited to take part in this forum. The League of Women Voters of Jefferson County is sponsoring the forum in cooperation with Lakewood 8. The views expressed here will be those of the candidates, not the views of the Jefferson County League of Women Voters or of Lakewood 8. The Jeffco League of Women Voters has provided all of the questions for the candidates. The League takes no stand in support or opposition to the candidates. Our forum is divided into six sections, one forum for mayor and one for each of five city council ward races. Each forum is about a half an hour long. This is the election forum for City Council Ward 3 in the city of Lakewood. Before we meet the candidates, here's a map of the boundaries of Ward 3.
Ward 3 covers the central and eastern section of Lakewood, roughly from Kipling Parkway east to Sheridan Boulevard and from West Alameda Avenue to as far south as West Yale Avenue.
The candidates for Ward 3 are Anita Springsteen and Henry Hollander. Welcome to both of you today. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and one minute for closing remarks. I'll ask as many questions as time permits and each candidate will have the chance to respond to each question with a two-minute limit per response. And they will take turns answering first. So Anita, if you please, your opening statement.
Okay, thank you. My name is Anita Springsteen and I'm running for city council in Ward 3. And I'm running because I want to keep Lakewood our home. I love Lakewood. And I believe that residents and businesses of Lakewood should come first before outside special interests. My grandfather moved his family to the Ward 3 area in 1949 as a veteran of World War II. I bought my house near Lasley Park in 2008. My two wonderful sons are in the Jeffco Public School System, so I have deep roots in Lakewood. I'm an attorney and small business owner of the Springsteen Law Firm. And therefore, I'm not running for money or prestige. I'm running, I already have a career. I'm running because I want to serve the citizens of Lakewood and continue to protect property and citizens' rights. I'm an independent thinker. I am not beholden to special interests or the establishment. And it's been interesting to watch with the recent ballot initiative 200, how much passion that voters in Lakewood have about smart development. And that outside money did not ultimately sway that vote. I hope that the voters of Lakewood will continue with their independent voting streak and vote for me, Anita Springsteen, as your next city councilwoman so that I can protect your citizens' rights. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anita. And now, Henry, if you would, your opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Henry Hollander and I'm running to be your next city councillor from Ward 3 because I love living in Lakewood and care deeply about its future. I want Lakewood to remain a great place to live, not only now, but for our children and grandchildren. I have the knowledge, experience, and commitment necessary to be an effective leader on city council from day one. I'm a retired civil engineer with directly relevant experience, both inside and outside of government, on traffic, stormwater, planning, and other such issues that frequently come before city council. For the last eight years, I've been on Lakewood's Planning Commission, including two years as its chair. So I have in-depth knowledge of Lakewood zoning and land use issues. As your city councillor, I will continue to promote a safe and efficient transportation system that works for all. You should be able to get wherever you want to go, however you want to get there. I will also continue to work for protection of our parks and neighborhoods because they are the backbone of our city. Another priority of mine is to preserve and improve upon our high quality of life through continued improvement and implementation of Lakewood's Forward Thinking Sustainability Plan. Lakewood of the future needs clean water, clean air, and clean energy. We are at a crossroads regarding the future of Lakewood. Decisions made by the next council will determine whether we continue to thrive as a city with great parks and beautiful, safe neighborhoods. I ask for your vote so that together, we can maintain the high quality of life in Lakewood for our children and grandchildren.
Thank you, Henry. Thank you, Anita, too. And so now we know pretty much what your objectives are as candidates, what you would like to see done. But I want to know, and the League would like to know, and Henry will start with you, why do this in the first place? City council, particularly in Lakewood, can be a fairly contentious job and it can be maybe a larger job than some candidates would guess. So I want to know, you know, what's your heart on this? Why do you want to be on the city council in Lakewood?
Well, this is something, having been on Planning Commission and experienced some of what you're talking about, I had to think long and hard whether I wanted to do this. However, I'm passionate about, I've spent eight years working towards a better future for Lakewood. And I retired from my business and I thought I was going to take it easy a little bit. But what's happening in the city is just too important. We need, we need experience on council. And so I stepped up and decided to run in spite of all the downside of running. And so that's why I'm running. I care about the city too much to not be involved.
Anita, same question for you. As Henry pointed out, there can be a lot of angst. I know as a reporter, I've covered Lakewood City Council meetings. Late into the next, the next day, you know, a lot of late nights and early mornings with this council and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of very pointed opinions. It can be a tough thing. So, you know, what's, what's your motivation for all of this? Why specifically do you want to be on the city council?
Well, I have been in local politics issues for many years, ever since I moved to Lakewood. And I have seen certain injustices that I, that I've wanted to make right. And so it's kept me active. And I think one thing I would point out, as I'm starting to walk through my neighborhood and knock on doors and meet my neighbors, is that I really just love the people of Lakewood. And I've made a lot of really great friends already doing that. And so I like to listen to people, to get to know them, and to hear what their concerns are, and to see if there's something I can do as an advocate to make their voices heard and make them feel better about their city and that their government is serving them. I do think some issues we've had regarding smart development and sustainability and issues that are close to people's hearts are really important. And I feel the people of Lakewood need a city councillor who's really going to listen and then act effectively. So I guess I'm doing it because I love this city.
Okay, good answers, both of you. And we're going to talk about the growth issue because at the moment, it seems to be the only thing anybody in Lakewood wants to talk about, as I'm sure the two of you are aware. And again, our questions from the League of Women Voters of Jefferson County. Henry, what do you see, excuse me, I should reverse the questions this time. So Anita, for you. What do you see as a current challenge for your ward specifically? And what action would you propose to overcome it? So a specific challenge for your ward and what, how do you propose to overcome it?
So I think going back to development and growth, it's a specific challenge for all of our neighborhoods, all of our wards, and the city of Lakewood, and truthfully, the metropolitan area in general. And, you know, I grew up near Sloane's Lake and there have been a lot of changes there in recent years. And so my parents still live on the block where I grew up. And all of the houses have been knocked down on that block and slot housing has been put up. And so what we're seeing is concrete, loss of open space, loss of places for families. And, you know, it's a big consideration when I bought my own house, that there was the backyard for my children to play and be healthy in. And so I feel that this continues to be an issue that we, as a suburban city, have to deal with in a smart and responsible manner. And when I'm talking to my constituents, that's, those are the issues I'm hearing. Traffic, safety. People living along some of the main streets have said that it has become dangerous to even cross the street. And so I think that we need to keep up with that growth and make sure that we're making smart decisions going forward. So, thank you.
Good answer. Henry, biggest challenge in the ward and your solution for it?
Well, I've been talking to the citizens of Ward 3 and the city, not just now as I'm running for office, but for the last eight years, I've been going to ward meetings, been participating in public hearings and informal meetings for 10 years now in Lakewood. I don't listen just to the loudest voices. I believe I have a sense of where we are. I hear, I hear concerns about affordable housing. I hear concerns about safety, both traffic safety and, you know, crime. There's concern about homelessness. There's concern about so many things. And we need, as a city, to be smart about how we approach these things. We're, we're a suburb of a major city and it's a, it's a growing city. And we're going to have, the employment in Lakewood has grown three times what, what the residential properties have, residential units have. So this, this creates a need for more housing in the city. But we need to do it in a way that's smart, in a way that works for all. We don't need it in the neighborhoods. We have, that's one of the beauties about Lakewood is they have beautiful, established neighborhoods that, you know, if we destroy that, we destroy the backbone of the city. So having said that, there's a lot of concern about all the vacant properties in Lakewood. I hear a lot of that. And so we do need enough residential development to support businesses so they will invest in these properties.
So let's talk about the growth issue. And I have a short reading of the ordinance for you here. And Henry takes this question first, all right? "With the passing of Lakewood Question 200, the city council will be determining the number of allocations available for issuance for each year based on 1% of the number of estimated dwelling units as of December 31 of the previous year as the equal point, while allowing for any additions of new dwellings, annexations, and exempted projects, and subtractions for any destroyed or abandoned dwellings and expired permits." It's a complicated ordinance, but basically, I know you're both familiar with it. So my question is, how do you see this change affecting your ward? You just touched on it, but how specifically do you see this touching the people in your ward?
Well, as I mentioned, we have, we have vacant properties in our ward. And, you know, people want, people want them improved upon for so many reasons, obvious reasons. And that can only happen if private investors are willing to invest in the property to fix it up and, and use it, you know, have, if it's a commercial property, they have to know that they have enough customers to support it. There have been vacant properties sitting for quite a while in Ward 3 that have, have been converted to, to housing, you know, denser housing. And so you took a vacant property with all the problems of that and it's usable now. We need to do more of that. We don't have, we don't have enough housing. It's going to be more difficult to do that now with the passage of 200. We have to implement it. It's very complex. I've been working with ordinances like this my whole life. First time I read it, my head was about to explode. So, and that's a problem. Council right now is struggling in how to implement it. There's a lot of exceptions and loopholes and, and how we treat that in a way that doesn't impact the neighborhoods, but yet accomplishes what we need to accomplish as far as economic development and, and, you know, occupancy of these vacant properties.
Anita, it is complex for developers, for residents, for city council members. So I want to know, what is your opinion of how this impacts the ward?
Well, certainly it's going to have an impact on the ward and the city itself. I think the main thing is that the voters have spoken and so it is up to the city to implement what the voters have called for. And so when I hear about that it's complicated and there are delays in how we're going to implement it, that concerns me because I am going to be a representative that speaks for the voters and implements what they asked me to do. They are my boss. There's an issue in my ward surrounding the closure of White Fence Farm. And there was a development plan put in place long ago that made it a planned development that only allowed for a certain number of units to go into that area. And unfortunately, what has occurred is that the planning department that my opponent has been a part of for many years, has gone around that development plan and has put in place a permit for 83 more units than this development plan called for. Well, this is where residents and their voices need to come first and be heard before those outside money interests. And unfortunately, I think that we need a lot more work at making those voices heard. And so what I would pledge in my ward is to make sure I'm listening to the existing residents and, and making sure that I'm implementing what it is they want when they've lived in this ward for 50 years plus.
Henry, I have to give you an opportunity to respond to that, so I'll give you a minute to rebut. And that, the accusation is that you are overstepping as a planner for the White Fence Farm development?
This is a mischaracterization and this is what happens too much in this city. I'm on the Planning Commission, not part of the Planning Department. The decisions that were made regarding White Fence Farm were made by the Planning Department as a use by right, based on an ordinance that was passed through a public process back in 2012. So the voters spoke then of what they wanted, and that included zoning for this particular property. And what has been proceeding is the use by right for that property. It's unfortunate that White Fence Farm went out of business. But there are property rights and the property owner is allowed to sell it and build what is appropriate for that site. I can't say a whole lot more because it is a quasi-judicial issue because it's coming before the Planning Commission. There's an appeal on the decision by the Planning Department.
Okay.
So we're actually overseeing what the Planning Department has said.
All right. I want to give you an opportunity to respond. So Anita, next question from the League of Women Voters is, what makes Lakewood the great place to live that it is, most specifically your ward?
That's a great question. I, I grew up near Lakewood, near the Sloane's Lake area, and that's where I always wanted to migrate. That sort of seemed the promised land to me of sorts, growing up in that area. And that's because of the open space that we have, particularly in our ward. The city has just bought the Taylor Ranch, so we're going to have more park space and open space. We have this country-style feel in our ward. For instance, my street doesn't have any sidewalks and I like it that way. I feel like I'm living in the country. And like I said, I wanted my kids to have backyard to play in where they would be healthy and get exercise. And so I hate to see that kind of thing go away. We need to protect that way of life. And certainly, there's going to be more and more people who come to our state and we will have to find ways to accommodate them. But I don't think we have to give up what we moved to the ward for in the first place, which was, you know, to see a fox running up the street in my neighborhood or to see hawks nesting in my trees. I think everybody who came to Colorado came here because they loved the outdoors. And I believe that we can continue to protect that beauty in Ward 3.
Henry, you've been around for a number of years as well. What in your opinion makes your ward, the city of Lakewood by extension, the great place to live that it is?
Well, it's its parks and neighborhoods. Most neighborhoods are within a short walking distance of a park. And the location of Lakewood makes it extremely desirable place to live. You can be downtown for plays or sporting events or, or many, many things downtown in, you know, 15, 20 minutes. You go 15, 20 minutes the other way, you can start hiking up in the mountains. And so because it's such a desirable place, people want to live here. And, you know, you can try and keep the people out. It's not going to work. We're, we're one of the, we're a city with one of the highest populations in the state and, and we're growing and next to a growing city. We need to plan for that. And we do have a plan for that. There are some people that think we'd need to modify that plan a little bit. And, you know, I'm open to that. It's a living document. We need to continue to, to work towards improvement of that. But if we, if we just put a wall around city and keep people out, it's still, it's still going to change. You're going to have more and more vacant properties, more deterioration, more homeless because people can't afford, people who work can't afford to live there. So we need to make sure, and I have the experience, I've been working on these issues my whole life, to recognize, when something's proposed, the proponents always say it's the greatest thing in the world and the opponents say it's awful. And I have the experience to be able to sift through all that and make an intelligent decision. Is this best for the people or not? And I've been doing that on Planning Commission, will continue to do that. I do vote no sometimes.
Let me ask you about that change going forward. What challenges for your ward, if any, do you anticipate as the Lakewood 2025 Moving Forward Comprehensive Plan approaches its completion dates during your term?
Well, it's now getting appropriate to start relooking at that plan. We have a good process. We have a good ordinance. It's not perfect. Where we have holes, it's, it's, people have made the city aware of where those holes are. On Planning Commission, we worked hard. We came up in a, in a seven-month period with 27 recommendations of how to improve the zoning ordinance. So we've been working on this. It was kind of backwards because we did a zoning ordinance first and then we updated our comprehensive plan. And that's kind of backwards. Your zoning ordinance should, should be consistent with your plan. So now is the time to relook at that and look at some of these issues that have come up. And, and, you know, make adjustments to the plan as necessary and then look at the zoning code again and make sure the zoning code is consistent with that plan. Through a public process, that's how the 2025 plan, I came on Planning Commission as that was being developed. And so I know the process and there was a lot of public outreach. It wasn't done, it wasn't done in a back room. We talked to a lot of people. We got a lot of input online. We had a lot of meetings, public hearings, and, you know, it was based on the will of the people.
Anita, where are you on the 2025 plan?
Well, you know, I would respectfully disagree with my opponent about the, the changing, the changes to the zoning ordinance in 2012. And that was, that that was truly a true, complete public process. Because what I've seen over the years is many of the residents of Lakewood have come to find out how those changes have negatively impacted their community and are disappointed. And so with respect to the comprehensive plan, we're getting the same sort of disappointment from residents who think that this is the guiding document to make their voices heard in their communities. And then they're coming to find out that oftentimes the comprehensive plan is not being used as a guiding document completely. And so I think the spirit of the comprehensive plan needs to be reevaluated and shored up and there needs to be accountability for how that comprehensive plan is being followed. And so we need people on council who are willing to call it out if the comprehensive plan isn't being followed. Now, I mean, we have a lot of issues that we want to see this, this city achieve. We want sustainability. We want affordable housing. We want housing diversity so that people can afford to buy and not just rent. And so I think that we need a fresh set of eyes on this issue with the comprehensive plan. And I hope that I can bring a voice to the voters.
All right. A fascinating discussion from both of you. Thank you very much. It is time now for your closing statements. Each of our candidates will have one minute. And Anita, you will speak first. Your closing statement, if you please.
Okay, thank you. I became an attorney because as a little girl, I was always wanting things to be fair. I believed that justice was worth fighting for. And I have fought for justice on behalf of my clients, my family, the citizens of Lakewood for many, many years. So I know how to listen and then I know how to act in an effective manner. It's at the local level where our interests are most at stake. How long is it going to take for the police to respond if we need help? When are our roads going to be plowed so we can get to work in the snow? How is our development going to move forward in a smart way so that we can preserve our way of life and what's important to all of us? These are all very important questions. I ask for your vote to be your voice. Please help me keep Lakewood our home. Please vote for me, Anita Springsteen, as your next Lakewood city councillor. Thank you.
All right, Anita, thank you. And Henry, your closing statement, if you will.
Yes, I agree with Anita on the vision for the future of Lakewood. We need to keep Lakewood Lakewood. However, I have the experience of working on planning and other such issues that, that determining the future of the city. And, and I've been hearing from all the residents, that we, I love living in Lakewood and I'm hearing that from a lot of that from a lot of the residents. So we must be doing something right. When the recession hit in the, about 10 years ago, and I work with cities as civil engineers all over the metro area, many were struggling because they couldn't, you know, they didn't have the budget to maintain their roads and parks. And when I moved back to Lakewood 10 years ago, that was in the middle of this, and they were still paving the roads, maintaining their parks. And that's because they invested in the city, and we need to continue to do that. And we're doing it in a way with, by the way, that the majority of the people indicated. So I ask for your vote so that I can continue this work that I've done on Planning Commission, on city council, because, again, I want a city that works not only today, but for our children and grandchildren.
Thank you, both of you, and great good luck to you both in what is ahead. And thank you for being a part of our broadcast today. And those are the city council candidates in Ward Three, Anita Springsteen and Henry Hollander. Election Day is November the 5th. All active voters will be mailed a ballot between October 14th and October 18th. For your convenience, there will be an outside ballot drop-off box on the west side of the Civic Center located at 480 South Allison Parkway. If you choose to mail your ballot, be sure that it is mailed early enough to ensure that it arrives by the deadline on Tuesday, November 5th. For more drop-off box locations, as well as the nearest polling centers, go online to For candidate and ballot information, please consider using vot411.org, the online voter's guide, which will be available starting on October 8th, 2019. This guide provides a side-by-side comparison of the candidates for all of the Colorado races. Thank you for watching.